... City Council Meeting. If we can get that, yeah, the last one in. All right, thank you. If you'll all please rise for the invocation, tonight's invocation will be given by Councilman Kevin Boone. And if I can ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Good day, my Father, Lord, we thank you so much for the many blessings you've bestowed upon this town, Lord. We thank you for all the many things you've done. Bless this town as we go forward, Lord, and be with this council, Lord, and make the decisions based on your will and your judgment, Lord. Be guiding directors in all that we do. And we'll be with this world, be with problems in the -- these other towns are participating and are happy, but we're not happy. Please be with them and show them the error of their ways. In your precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moved the flags a little bit, didn't they, Jimmy?
Threw me off.
Saw you turn around and try to find it. I've got, first, I've got an announcement to make. If you are here for rezoning cases, ZC 21.04 and ZC 20.05, they were advertised for tonight's City Council meeting. If anyone is here to address those cases to the public or during the public hearing, these will be rescheduled for the June 28 Fairhope City Council meeting at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Was there anybody here for those cases, for those zoning cases? That's 21.04 and 20.05. Okay. Well, we apologize if you were here for those, but they'll be heard at the next meeting. Council, I want to also ask you to, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add item 30, which was the resolution that we were given prior to the work session concerning the removal of trees at Volanta Park. And also, before I ask someone to make a motion, Marcus, do we need to include in the motion to amend Agenda Item 19, or we just leave it on there and you're just going to give me the amended?
Just amend it once we get to it, and then vote on the amendment, and then vote to amend it, and then amend it, and then vote on the amendment.
Got you. Okay, all right. So for now, I'll just ask for a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add item 30 that's concerning the removal of the trees at Volanta Park.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion to amend tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, and has been amended. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings held on May the 24th. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes, Council?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Chief Holliday, do you have some special presentations or announcements to make?
Yes, sir, I do. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for your continuous support to our police department, to the men and women of the police department, and thank you for allowing us this moment to recognize two of our officers who have been recently promoted within our department. I believe that being promoted is one of the greatest achievements. It is an accomplishment in one's life and career. Promotions highlight past accomplishments, and it is a reward for those accomplishments. But it also allows, or it also shows, that a person has professionally demonstrated their ability for aptitude, their aptitude to be challenged at another higher level. These officers will definitely be challenged, and they are going to realize that there are bigger challenges the higher you go. I also want to take a moment and thank our HR department, who played a big role in this as well. We started a new process, a new promotion process, this year, and they assisted us in making sure that everything was done properly. And so I just want to reach out and just say thanks to Travis Cunningham, our HR director, and his team for assisting us in this process. The first promotion that I'd like to announce is a promotion from corporal to sergeant. And at this time, I would like Sergeant Trent Scott to come to the front. Sergeant Scott's been with the Fairhope Police Department for 20 years. He has served at the rank of corporal in the patrol division for the past two years, and he did this successfully, providing leadership to those he works with. In addition, Sergeant Scott is one of three traffic homicide investigators for our department. This above is not an easy task, because it requires precision to get everything right. He has taken on his new role in patrol as a shift sergeant, where he will supervise and oversee a team of dedicated patrol officers. I'd like to thank you, Sergeant Scott, for your dedication, time, and service, and congratulate you on your promotion to sergeant. The second promotion I would like to announce is a promotion to corporal. Corporal Becky Woodruff, if you would, please step forward. Corporal Woodruff has been with the Fairhope Police Department a little over 17 years. I told you if I got this right. She has been in law enforcement for 23 years. She started her career as a communications officer in 1998 with the Daphne Police Department. She became a police officer with Fairhope in 2009. Corporal Woodruff has served as a K-9 officer for nine years, and has served as an investigator for the past three years. She is taking on a new role of corporal in the patrol division, where she will take on a supervisory role with her patrol squad. Thank you, Corporal Woodruff, for your dedication and your time and your service. Congratulations on your promotion. Lastly, I've worked closely with both of these officers over the years, and I'm very proud of what they have accomplished in the years that they've been with Fairhope Police Department, and therefore in other agencies as well. They're dedicated. They are dedicated to providing the best service to our city and our citizens, and I know that they will continue to do a great job. Again, I just want to thank each of you for allowing me this opportunity to share our promotions with you and all the great things that our officers do, and we're seeing y'all more and more often, so it's a good thing. Just thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Holliday, and thanks to all the other officers that are here for supporting your fellow officers, too. That means a lot to see. And I know that some are out on patrol, and some may be sleeping because they have a night shift, but it's good to see all of you here. Thank you. Okay, next is a report of the mayor. Ms. Jessica Walker, I believe you have some presentations to make.
So I am here on behalf of the mayor tonight, and we are here to recognize our junior city council members for 2020, 2021, and to thank them for their service. Now, these high school students have shown us during a very difficult year their maturity and desire to make our city better. Mid-year, we asked them to change course, and they did just that and did it like champs. I know you've seen them here as they have learned how local government works and learned what it takes to get a project off the ground and implemented, and you can see that right now at the Fairhope Pier. As you're going down Fairhope Avenue, if you look and you see their sunset staircase, they really left their mark on our city. So we're very proud of them. I'm very proud of them. I think they've done a great job. And tonight, I have some plaques to present to the members who are present. So, ladies, if you will stand, I have a plaque for you, and then if, Council, if you're okay with it, I'd love for them to come forward so I can have their picture taken with you as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, first I have Victoria Watley. Thank you, Victoria. Addison Spears.
Thanks.
Ann Lyles Tapscott.
Thank you.
Grayson McKean.
Thanks.
And Gailie McElbang. And then, yes. And I would be remiss if we did not also recognize the members who are not here. That's Emory Horton, Isabella McCormick, Raphael Olivier, and Isabel Latran. They all worked very hard, and we're very proud of them. So, gentlemen, if you will stand.
Stand behind him, Jessica.
You either.
Yeah. Jessica, did the mayor have anything else to report tonight that you're aware of?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on tonight's agenda will be public participation. This would be pertaining to Items 7 through 30. Item 6 will be its own public hearing, so if you want to speak to that when we open up the floor to the public hearing, you can speak on that. So if you would like to address the council on Items 7 through 30, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Y'all have to excuse me, my allergies are affecting my voice.
I understand.
My name is Sarah Fisher. I live at 22 Audubon Place in Fairhope, and I'm here about item number 25. And I don't have anything in particular to present, I just wanted to see if the council had any questions for me with regards.
You know, five to eight, I mean, how many people are you expecting? I mean, is this going to take up like the entire sidewalk around South Beach Park? What can people expect from this?
I wouldn't be surprised if we had a good showing within the park. I don't imagine it would spill over out of the park and would feel pretty comfortable saying we'd be able to maintain that.
Okay.
I want to make sure that it's okay if we put a table or two in the grassy areas of the park.
Yeah, I think we can accommodate that.
Okay.
Yeah, it says it actually in the resolution to put up a table.
Good, wonderful. I just want to make sure I dot all the i's and cross all the t's.
Sure.
Wonderful, that was all. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any further clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Items 7 through 30. Okay, we will close public participation, and I will remind everyone, if you have something that's not on tonight's agenda that you would like to bring forth to the City Council, you will be given an opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments? Councilman Conyers?
No comments tonight.
Councilman Boone?
No comment.
Okay. I don't have any comments tonight, so we'll move right into Item 6, which is a public hearing of an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to zone the property of Roberta Harris, Stephen Urbannick, and Margaret Dunham to a planned unit development concurrent with annexation to the city of Fairhope. The property is generally located to southeast corner of the intersection of County Road 48 and Blueberry Lane in Fairhope, Alabama, and the property to be known as Overland Pud. Would somebody introduce the ordinance, please?
It is the ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Council President. This property is just east of River Mill. The zoning, as you see on the left, this is currently unzoned property adjacent to the city limits. The image on the right of the screen shows an aerial, half the existing lot is in farmland and wetlands and woodlands, or make up the western half of the site. This is a PUD, which is a planned unit development, which will have its own zoning and is site-plan-driven. It is approximately 30.7 acres and will consist of 61 single-family homes, lots, and 16 town home apartments within the PUD. There are seven different housing layouts provided within the PUD, and as y'all know, we've adopted the master development plan as a portion of a PUD that contains those houses, floor plans, as well as many other documents. Details on the development, the maximum building height will be 30 feet. Minimum house size, as proposed, is 1,600 square feet, with the smallest lot being 6,500 square feet. The 16-unit townhomes will be a minimum of 1,200 square foot each with a height limit of 35. This is a black and white plan on the left side of the screen and a colored rendering on the right side of the screen. If you look in the top-left corner, that is the 16-unit townhomes. There is a floodway and flood zone and wetlands within the site that the development is proposing to utilize in a preserved environment. There will be walking trails throughout that preserved area. The 61 single-family residential lots are provided on the eastern side of the parcel. These have already went through planning commission for preliminary plat, both the Phase 1 and Phase 2 for the single-family development, and are awaiting this zoning improvement. This is Phase, and the townhomes will be a later date, probably come back as an MOP, but is approved, or is recommended for approval within this PUD. The overall density of the site is 2.5 units per acre. As you can see, there's 6,500 approximately hundred-square-foot lots, which are smaller lots, but there's a large reserve here on the site. The, I believe, the required green space for this was 15%. They're at 29, almost 30% of the site, nine acres of green space. The total overall common area is 14.89 acres, or 48.5% of the site. There is a 10-foot buffer along the perimeter of the site, along Fairhope Avenue. There is a 20-foot green space buffer, as required by our tree ordinance. A wooden fence will be built along the rear lot lines of Lot 21 through 23, and just for reference, I'll flip back there, that is to the left, or to the right side of your screen on each of these plans. So that is undeveloped farmland, as you can see here to the east or the right side of that aerial imagery. It's single-family, unzoned property right now. Let's see, there are sidewalks within the right-of-way. When this went through planning commission, there was a bit of a question whether that was going to be allowed in the right-of-way. This is Baldwin County Highway Department right-of-way, not City of Fairhope, so they had to approve that. That was approved, and we do have confirmation of that. So there will be sidewalks provided along Fairhope Avenue, as well as internal sidewalks within the site and walking trails. The staff recommends approval of CZ 21.01, Overland PUD amendment for Pen 43640 be approved with the following conditions, and this has already been approved with the preliminary plat, but all sidewalks and street trees shall be installed prior to submission of final plat approval, including the sidewalk along Fairhope Avenue. This was heard at Fairhope, I mean, at the planning commission, and they have recommended approval themselves with a vote of eight to zero, so it was unanimous. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Were there any, were there any residents that lived near this that spoke in opposition? The only, it looked pretty good. If I had to pick on a couple of things, I would say you have the townhomes, the apartments, right across the street from the back of the River Mill subdivision lots. There were no objections to that?
No, sir. We actually did not have any, anyone show up at the, the applicant is required to do a community meeting. No one showed up to that. We had no one there to challenge at the planning commission. And if you will notice, about where the townhomes are, they're adjacent to 48, is a common area within that River Mill development. So the townhomes aren't backing up to any residential spaces.
Right. If you go back to that, the slide, you had it on just prior.
And this is, so the townhomes would sit here, and this is the common area that it's adjacent to within River Mill. And so that's kind of what you're seeing in the colored rendering.
That's that wide space there?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, we've got two images here, so we're taking out the neighboring property, but that would be, you have a road, and then there's the common area of River Mill.
Where's the lot that was, where's the lot that I believe was a single tax was going to purchase somewhere in that area?
Yes, sir. That is, so the best way to see that is this square here?
Yeah, that's, instead of that common area, that's actually going to be?
And that's the same lot here.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be a city park right there.
Yes, sir. That's the one that single taxes.
I thought that's what that was.
It's kind of cleaning out that wetland area where there were some spoils dumped, and cleaning that up, and does have plans to turn that over to the city as a park.
I guess the only other, if I was going to have a criticism, which, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to keep me from supporting it, is that, not real crazy about the rows of houses and the cookie cutter look of that, however, you can't really argue with the amount of green space that's in the project when it's roughly between common areas and green space, what, 48%?
Yeah.
And 30% green space?
And, you know, this is a type of the size lots that I think a lot of developers would try, like to get.
Right.
But most of it's happening in our ETJ, and we have a requirement of 15,000 square foot per lot. So really, this is one of the only ways to achieve this size lot, is to have a PUD and to have something else to offer, instead of filling the whole area with 6,500 square-foot lots. You do have a good buffer here, and it is a pretty critical area, as you know, with a floodway and wetlands there as that moves south.
And what's to the east of that property again, Hunter?
That, so to the east is a single-family unzoned lot.
Right.
Everything in this kind of beige color is unzoned property. Baldwin County was what we call within our planning jurisdiction, but unzoned.
Okay. Do I have questions for Hunter before we open up the public hearing?
I had, I heard about this product some time ago. Has this, has it been held up?
Yes, sir. This is, as y'all know, and we read an announcement, and there's nothing to do but be honest when you mess up. We have had a little bit of a changeover in our department, and we're kind of handling a lot of roles right now. All the advertisement, the bulk of what we need to do are getting advertisements and writing ordinances, and all of those things were done. We just had a little bit of lag getting cases from planning commission to city council, and that one, this is one of those. So some of those are, there's just been a little lag getting those from one to the other. We have hired a new person that's helping with that, and that is our biggest push right now, is to make sure we can get some of these things in deadlines met. But, Councilman, I have to take ownership of that.
I'm not looking for fault or anything, I'm just asking more, less asking questions. In fact, a lot of times when, you know, you get held up as a developer years ago, you know, it just costs a lot of money to hang on, as long as everything being, you know, take care of it.
Yes, sir. Yep. We didn't hold up, and we typically would, we typically would not review a preliminary case until this makes it through council. But as y'all understand, our deadlines for advertisements can stretch out, you know, the legal advertisements can stretch out. So we went ahead and allowed those two cases to be heard, so those were approved, but need or conditioned on this getting approved by city council.
And there were no complaints? That's interesting.
Surprisingly. Yep.
All right. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak to this zoning ordinance, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
David Deal with SC Civil. I'm the surveyor and land planner on this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. One of the things that we would request is, being that we were approved in February and that we had no opposition throughout the whole process, as well as a unanimous recommendation by the planning commission, that we would ask if the city council would consider suspending the rules and getting this taken care of tonight? Is that a possibility?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to vote against it, a vote against that. One reason why is we're missing 40% of the council.
Sure.
And, you know, you probably want, you want at least four votes on that. You do. You don't want three for a zoning, I'm sorry, for an ordinance, it's always good to get four votes, and so I would vote against the immediate consideration, and I suspect if Councilman Robinson was here, he would do the same.
Sure.
So I'm sorry, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. It's open to the public. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll let this lay over until the next council meeting, and we'll consider it for final adoption at that time. Thank you. I apologize, sir, it just, and doesn't hurt to ask, sometimes we do and sometimes we don't, it's, you know, there's just rules, when you have three council members, you could also run a chance, and I don't know anybody's going to vote against it, if you get a two-to-one vote, it's not a passage on an ordinance. I don't know if you're aware of that, because it's the majority of the members of the voting body, whether they're present or not, when it's of a permanent nature of an ordinance, and that's why I don't like to take votes for an ordinance when there's only three, if it's standard procedure to table it. That's another reason why, just to explain to you. Okay, Item 7 is final adoption of an ordinance to approve an application from Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United for a Franchise Agreement to Operate Beverage Vending Machines at the locations specified in Bid Number 6 dash 21, Beverage Vending and Concessions 2021, and is in the best interest of the public and City of Fairhope to grant this franchise agreement introduced at the May 24, 2021 city council meeting. Does anybody have any questions about this? I know that there was a three-year contract, it expired, so this is just entering into another three-year contract, and I think we approve it every year as well, don't we? Ms. Hanks?
It's every three years.
It's every three? We don't approve it, one, we don't approve three one-years? Seems like we go through that vending contracts a lot, though.
You've already approved the contract, this is the franchise agreement that goes with the contract.
Oh, this is the franchise agreement, that's what I remember. Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor. I'm sorry, Clark, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number eight is final adoption of an ordinance directing the transfer and declaring certain real property a surplus not needed for public or municipal purposes located at intersection of County Road 13 and County Road 32, tract number one. This is containing 0.21 acres, more or less. Two, Baldwin County, Alabama, to be used as part of the construction of a roundabout at said intersection, which will serve a public purpose, allowing easier ingress and egress to the city's future sports fields and increase traffic safety at said, excuse me, intersection, introduced at the May 24, 2021 city council meeting. I understand the mayor has contacted the people, the farmers that currently have that lease, and let them know, and, you know, that they don't have a problem with that. Like I said, it's only .21 acres, so if I can get a motion for final adoption?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call a question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number nine is an ordinance, the City of Fairhope repealing and replacing Section 21-21, encoded ordinance by adoption of the following electric rates for all customers of the city. Council members, you'll see that in your books or on your MacBooks there, about oh, four pages. Can I get someone to introduce the ordinance, please?
Introduce the ordinance.
Okay. I'll go ahead and see if I can't cover this. This has to do with changing the base rates for, I believe, most all of our customers, the vast majority of which are residential or are ones on Section 2121A, Item 1. It's currently, your base rate is $11.10. That would raise the base rate to $13 per month, and that's a fixed cost for now. The rate, the usage rates remain unchanged. Just to give you an example of other utilities' base rates, Riviera's is currently $20 per month, and Baldwin EMC is $37.95, and we're at $11.10. So we're roughly half of Riviera's and less than a third of Baldwin. So we're roughly half of Riviera's and less than a third of Baldwin EMC. We're proposing that to go up by a dollar ninety. The industrial and commercial rates are going up just slightly. I, I didn't have the old numbers in front of me, but I wanna say they were somewhere between a dollar and two dollars. This also does have in there a section twenty-one, twenty-one A, number four, hospital, which is applicable to a hospital electric service where their maximum fifteen-minute interval integrated demand is five hundred kilowatts or more, and establishes the base rate and the charges, energy charges for that. And then the schools and the other designated, I would say, how would you say that? Designated customers by class of customer, I would say. The base rates are, are all changing by approximately two dollars or less per month. I believe, Lisa, I'm trying to look through here and make sure, Kim, you can step in, is that it does also increase the base rate.
You can look at the very last page.
Pardon?
If you look at the very last page.
Yeah, on the very last page at the bottom. This would take effect if adopted on August one, twenty twenty-one. And then on October first, twenty twenty-two, the base rate would go up for another two dollars a month. And then on October the first, twenty twenty-three, the base rate would go up an additional two dollars a month. So it would go to thirteen on August one. And then the following October, over a year later, it would go to fifteen and then it would go to seventeen. And then even if those other utilities keep their base rates the same, we would still be below Riviera's and we would be still less than half of Baldwin EMC's base rate. So we've changed our sewage rates, we've made some tweaks to our gas fees, we've made some tweaks to our garbage rates and water rates, and I think this is the last utility at which we need to make sure that we just keep up with the times on this, so. Jeremy, if you wanted to say anything, Kim, if you wanna say anything, I think I've covered pretty much everything. It's basically two dollars or less changed to the base rate for, for all customers and the establishment of the hospital class. Any questions, counsel? Not, we'll let this lie over for final consideration at the next council meeting. Item number ten is a resolution, the City Council authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute the American Rescue Plan Act agreement between the City of Fairhope and the United States Department of Treasury for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be used in compliance with section six oh three C of the Social Security Act, Treasury's regulations implementing that section and guidance issued by the Treasury regarding the foregoing. Counsel, I'll assume you want the one point nine four one million dollars, while I will entertain a motion to allow the.
Same move.
Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item eleven is a resolution, the proposed certificate of amendment is hereby approved for the Fairhope Airport Authority under the provisions of Title Four, Chapter Three, Article Two, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. And as mentioned in the work session, the changes just basically state that four directors must reside within the corporate limits of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, and that three directors may reside within the corporate limits or within the Baldwin County Board of Education School Zone, which services any Fairhope Elementary School, the intermediate school, J. Larry Newton School. And it should also say, and Fairhope High School. Think that was left out. Basically, the Fairhope High School feeder pattern is what that entails. Think that, that I can make that change in that, can I, Lisa, on the fly?
Yes.
Okay, counsel, so, just allowing us to recruit directors from within either the municipal limits or the, four of them must be, but we could pick up to three that may be outside the corporate limits but are in the school feeder pattern area, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve as such.
Same move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you. Item number twelve is a resolution, the City Council approves the selection of Kimley Horn to perform professional consulting services for the new water transmission line on County Road thirty-three and hereby authorizes the mayor to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. I'll just remind you, counsel, that that would be brought back for approval. So this is just approving the selection. I believe that Jason is in favor of this, am I, do I understand that correctly? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Same move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the selection. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item thirteen is a resolution, the City Council approves the selection of Stewart Engineering Incorporated to perform professional engineering services for the system study for the electric department and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Does anybody have any questions for Jeremy? He briefed us in the work session on this. I was gonna ask you, Jeremy, was this originally in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been in the works for a while then. Oh, it says our budget, I see it now. Okay. Let's see how close they get to that budget amount.
It's gonna be dead on.
All right. Can I entertain a motion to approve the selection?
Same move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item fourteen is a resolution, the City of Fairhope hereby rejects RFQ number thirteen dash twenty-one for the North Beach Pavilion Repairing Placement of the Asphalt Shingle Roof FEMA forty-five sixty-three. That was damaged by Hurricane Sally for the Public Works Department due to the excessive price. The only one responds and authorizes staff to seek informal quotes.
Make the motion, we approve the resolution to reject the bids as presented.
Hey, make the, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I have one question. Was this gonna be reimbursed through FEMA funds? Can you say? Jim?
This is a commutation of FEMA inter-enters. So our deductible is three hundred thousand dollars. So we'll get our FEMA reimbursement for the three hundred thousand dollar deductible. So as the storm in total for all our property, we're over a million in cost, Lisa?
Yeah.
We're over a million dollars in cost in our building, so we'll get our deductible from FEMA.
So we'll get our deductible from FEMA. So, and I hate to be this way, 'cause, you know, I'm very cost-conscious. There's a fifteen thousand dollar bid and a twenty thousand dollar bid, but we're rejecting a fifteen thousand dollar bid on something that we're being reimbursed for.
Yes, we're rejecting because it, that was the only bidder. And so as.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was two prices for one bidder, okay. I said, I gave you, I said that wrong, I saw two numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was one bidder?
So when we have one bidder, we can reject that one bid and go out for quotes and see if we can get a cheaper price.
But we're spending a lot of time and effort to do so on something that seemingly doesn't matter. I'm just curious as to why now, why this one? Why on fifteen thousand dollars? I'd understand if it was two hundred and fifty, but what, what do we, if it's excessive, what's fifteen thousand gonna come down to? Is it gonna come down to twelve?
Ten? Or lower?
Okay. I'll go along with it. I, I, I see you guys sometimes, though, push things through for the sake of convenience that cost a lot more than what this is gonna cost us. In the grand scheme of things, this is not costing us anything. So why not honor the one bid? I mean, Kevin, you're always an advocate for the contractors that, that were responsive and here we are rejecting something for which we're gonna be reimbursed.
Yeah, that's a set of precedent for higher bids that they feel.
I, I can go along with that, but like, I'm gonna be keeping a real close eye on what the next one comes back at. I'm just gonna say, I hope it's a whole lot different than this. If it comes back and it's thousand or two thousand dollars cheaper and we put it off, I'm not gonna be too happy. And I'm gonna be very suspect at why we did it. Just gonna tell you, I'm gonna be very suspect at why we did it. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we have a motion in a second, don't we, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item fifteen is a resolution, the Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Vision Technology Solutions LLC doing business as Vision Internet Providers to perform professional services for website design and management with a not-to-exceed amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and eighty-one cents. Jeff, is anything special? You said this is just a renewal of the current contract?
Yes.
Okay. How many years is this for? Once?
So this is just to extend it one more year? Just a yearly renewal fee?
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? So, do they, do they add the content as, as well? Or do we add the content? What are the, what are we getting for eleven thousand dollars?
It's a content management system, so they host the site for us and give us a platform to easily update, update content. So we update the content ourselves, but they give us the platform to do so.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? It seems like a lot of money for one year to, to host. What are your thoughts on that?
We can, um.
Reject them all because we can get it for nine thousand? Sorry, I'm being smart, I'm like.
What we, what I could do is, there, there are many platforms out there, we can just call around and see what other people are getting charged for getting.
I don't wanna get too comfortable with people just renewing every year.
Right.
Eleven thousand dollars for one year for just hosting and we do the work.
Let me research that, we can definitely make a change if we need to.
No, we, we'll give them a year, will you do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Clerk, where are we? Do we have a motion in a second?
Need a motion in a second.
We do have a motion in a second, all right. Counsel, any other questions?
No, you need a motion.
Oh, need a motion in a second, I, I didn't think we had one, okay. I'll entertain a motion, counsel.
Same move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jeff. All right, item sixteen is a resolution, Mayor, Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with SC Civil to perform professional engineering services for the water main replacement at State Road one eighty-one along the right-of-way to County Road thirty-four for the Water Department with a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. And I see the engineer here and Jason's here, do you have any questions for them? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow the mayor to execute the contract?
Same move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item seventeen is a resolution to award the bid for materials formationery and concrete work for the ADA Compliance Project at the Fairhope Municipal Stadium for the Rec Department to base steel corporation with a total cost of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Entertain a motion?
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item eighteen is a resolution to award the bid for materials and installation, please get that on the record if you will, installation, clerk, for a new scoreboard and video message board for the Fairhope Municipal Stadium for the Recreation Department to Electro-Mech with a total cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Fairhope High School has committed one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to be paid over a five-year period in participation with the City of Fairhope. And Lisa, I saw a letter from the principal that said, let this letter serve as their commitment. Would, would a contract not be in order there? Marcus, as opposed to a letter from the principal that says, let the letter serve as a commitment to honoring this purchase? Is that letter legally binding?
We're, we're committing to doing this to be a resolution, subject to their one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar commitment.
Yeah, but we're paying for it upfront.
Subject to that commitment. And, and we can certainly hash out.
I think we should have a contract in place. I don't, I don't, I don't know that that, that letter's legally binding, I don't know that he has the authority to legally bind the school system to spend a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for that. It's, I think we should have a contract in place.
With more education or with?
Well, whomever it needs to be with, I would assume it's, yeah, I don't know, because I don't know if they're getting that from booster club funds or if they're getting it from school system funds.
It's sponsorship, sponsorship is what it is over a five-year period.
Okay.
Get some from the youth football or the small commitment there, based on their work, you know, with young, there's also other donors, I think individual donors that are committed to them to provide money for this over the next five years.
Okay. So basically, you're saying, what I'm hearing is maybe we can just stick with that letter for now, then?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
You're comfortable with it? Okay. All right. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for the materials for the new scoreboard and video message board.
Same move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let me also say, there was a lot of back and forth about the quality of the board and who we were gonna get to install the board and just a lot of back and forth. And Pat, thanks for all your work on that, I know that, you know, we were all kinda caught in the middle of that talk between, you know, what was being provided, what was not being provided, which, which one's better than the other. And I believe that you did speak to the mayor at length about this as well, if I'm not mistaken, right? And I believe she was in, she was comfortable with the, with who we were awarding this bid to. That was the original low bidder, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. All right. All right, we have a motion in a second, any other questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay? All right, motion carries, thank you, counsel. All right, if you get that amended resolution.
Would you like me to read that?
Yeah, so, I'm gonna have him read it and then we're gonna have to, gonna have to have a motion to.
Amended.
amend the resolution and then we will vote on the amended resolution.
It be resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope that all bids for the Nick Center Repair Replacement of Asphalt Shingles FEMA eight, or four, five, six, three for Community Affairs Department, bid number zero two two dash two one, are hereby rejected due to a discrepancy in the bid specs. City staff is hereby authorized to rebid the project with the corrected specs.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to amend the resolution as stated by City Attorney Marcus.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? Okay, now we'll vote on the amended resolution. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended resolution.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Thank you, Marcus, for doing that on the fly. Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye. Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Item number 20 is a resolution to award the bid for citywide concrete work, curbing ADA ramps, inlets and structures for the Public Works Department and utilities to Parton Smith Incorporated with a bid proposal for the unit amount shown in the attached bid tabulation. Entertain a motion to award the bid?
Same.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and you can see those bids tabulated in item 20. You have any questions or concerns? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of awarding the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries, thank you, council. Item 21 is a resolution to award the bid for six overhead doors for fire station number three for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department to Bailey Door Incorporated with a total bid proposal of $40,038. Entertain a motion to award the bid for the doors?
Same.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries, thank you, council. Item number 22 is a resolution to award the RFQ for the procurement to reshape, rebuild greens on holes number six and number 11, the Quail Creek Golf Course, to Surline Turf Incorporated with a total approximate cost of $21,080. And Mr. Hall went through this in detail during the work session, so I'll entertain a motion for the expense.
Same.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries, thank you, council. Item number 23 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2021 F-250 crew cab four-by-four pickup truck with a utility body for the Water Department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost of $41,450. And I will say that that is also a budgeted item, so I will entertain a motion for the purchase.
Same.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Item 23 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2021 F-250 super cab extended four-by-two pickup with a service body for the Water Department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost of $38,824. Also budgeted and also coming in under budget, so I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
Same.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay.
41.5, no, no, I might have rolled one, I'm sorry.
Yeah. 41.5, you good?
Yeah.
41,450, 38,824?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Item 25 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope approves requests from Sarah Fisher, Site Director of Prism United, Fairhope to hold a chalk event on the sidewalks in the South Beach Park on Saturday, June 25, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. and to put up a table to provide information about its program, distribute flyers and buttons and provide chalk and water. Prism United Fairhope is dedicated to serving the needs of the LGBTQ plus youth of Fairhope and the surrounding areas. I will entertain a motion to approve the request?
Same.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, council. Item number 26 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a 2022 F-350 crew cab four-by-four DWR pickup truck for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost of $48,272. And this procurement will be made using impact fees designated to our fire safety. I want to go ahead and give you also that this is known as, I find it, Dalton, where are you? Where is it in here? It's a certain name for this type of truck, I just want to get that on the record. It was called out.
Yes, sir, we're going to call that a squad vehicle.
Your squad vehicle, thank you, that's what I was looking for, this is for the new squad vehicle, anyway.
Anything else?
That was it. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the crew cab?
Same.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say, thanks, council, for getting this on because, you know, given how long it takes to get vehicles now, it's going to be probably well into next budget cycle before we get this. And I believe, Kim, there are going to be some more funds in the future that we have to expend next year before they expire, because these impact fees do expire and they have to be used for those purposes. So you may not only see this on next year's budget, but you may see some other items of interest to the Fire Department in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget. Did I get that right? Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second, all is in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, council. Item 27 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure a replacement chiller unit for the Fairhope Public Library with a 90-ton York air-cooled chiller. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the NCPA Cooperative, which has been nationally bid and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost of $88,125.25. Now, we heard from George in the work session, council, if we need to change this resolution, we can input the train unit, the description of that and the cost of that unit. So you've heard the arguments, you've heard about the warranties and you heard about the issues. So I'm at your mercy to tell me what you'd like to do moving forward with this purchase.
I would like to move forward with the, with the York unit that's being proposed on, on the agenda, I just think the 50% increase to buy the train unit, I'd be willing to take my chances on York even if the train's a better unit, I just think that's so substantial. I'd be willing to roll the dice.
Is that the form of the motion?
Well, that was a, I just, I just wanted to give you feedback.
I agree, I don't think you can argue the $40,000.
All right, in that case, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 27 as, as presented with the York.
Okay, I have a motion.
Same.
Have a motion in a second. George, the labor for that coil is, the, I think it's limited, the warranties is limited on that labor should it go out, and it has a five-and-a-half-year warranty. What is, do you know what's involved to replace those coils?
There's a lot more to replace the coil than it is.
I guess if we approved it, would there be any harm, Marcus, in trying to ask them to include that labor on that coil? I mean, we can approve it, I mean, they can say no and it'll still be approved, but I guess we can ask them, right?
Certainly ask, yeah.
Because I know that this company's trying to establish a relationship with the city, and maybe that would be a good faith effort in doing so to ask them to include that, the labor on that coil should it go out for.
Also, Richard said that if we include the York, that we would like to have an Austin Gold present a maintenance program. Would that have a relationship with them?
To come back and, and present a maintenance program for our consideration?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions or comments, council? Okay, we have a motion in a second on the table, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, if y'all will please do that, follow up with that, George, and see if we can't negotiate the, the labor in that warranty. They may not, they may be powerless to do so, but maybe, there's a chance. Okay, item number 28 is appointment to the Parking Authority. The nominee for a three-year term is Chad Bartz. The term shall end June 2024. Entertain a motion for the appointment?
Same.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, congratulations, Chad, on being appointed, thank you. Item number 29 is a write-off of customer terminated balances as of June 1, 2021 for balances prior to the fiscal year ending 2019 in the amount of $614,485.95. Kim, I'll let you explain that for just a couple of minutes.
If y'all remember when the auditors came back a few months ago, you know, one of our audit findings, it's been on the book, they have been continued as audit findings because we haven't done write-offs, and the $614,485.95, those are some balances that came over from our old system, and they came over as arrears. And so for us in our system to be able to write off, these are accounts that are past customers, so they're all terminated accounts, and the, I broke down on the spreadsheet, there's $201,141.19. Those accounts there, that is from, they were, they were terminated from 2016 to 19, those are just the arrear balances that was brought over from the old system, but they're still, we will have the ability to, to collect those, because state law, you can't go back anything greater than six years, but those are within that window. So we're working on a process of going with a third party to be able to help with some collection process. Our old management of the, of our accounts, we did not get social security numbers on customers when we set up accounts, and that's what makes it very difficult for us to go after collections on some of these old accounts also, but we have better practices now of setting up new accounts, better tools. So, and, you know, I will probably bring them back, some more accounts to write off, but this was old and this was one way that we could go in the system to clear out or to write off these arrear balances that came over from the old system.
So you'll bring us, when you have a third party interested in trying to collect these debts, you'll bring that to us for approval?
Yes, sir.
I was about to ask it, can, can you sell the older debt as well that doesn't even have social securities? I mean, not, not much of a market for that.
Well, anything that is going to be older than that 2015, legally, there, you can't collect on them.
Gotcha.
Anything that's been terminated, and this was, I got with Marcus on this just to make sure, but they're just, they're uncollectible because of the age of them. You know, and, and it's just been, you know, I look back at staffing, the number of staffing, you know, having here, trying to get collections, but there hasn't been anything done to look at these old accounts, I believe, in the past four years of hiring a third-party company. So that's something we're going to work, going to bring this up to what we should be doing on collecting these old accounts. This audit finding that's been on there, this is an easy fit to remove an audit finding of being able to work these old accounts and get these balances write-off or third, or turned up to a third party.
Yeah, I'd be interested in, in, you know, whomever we hire, you know, they'd be, you know, I know they don't do it every single day, but, you know, maybe it's every year they go back and chase down these bad accounts, because that's a considerable amount of money. And I don't have any misgivings that we would have collected all of that, you know, I know that we wouldn't have, but even if we collected a third of it, you know.
Yeah, and, and we have the ability through the, through the state, through the league, there's a program that, as long as you have their name, their social security number, in the months of January leading up through really June, you can put their balances in, and if they're receiving a state refund from Alabama, it gets zapped.
Right, I'm familiar with that program, yeah.
And so that's a program that the city needs to be utilizing.
Yeah, well, we're signed up for it, I mean, we're in the program, but you were just not using it.
Yeah, and if you don't, you know, it was just when the accounts were set up, old accounts were set up, they just didn't collect that data.
All right. All right. All right, any questions for Kim? If not, I'll entertain a motion to write off the customer terminated balances.
Same.
Same.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 30, which was added at the beginning of tonight's meeting, I'll read it real quick,